Cars in the Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council, although it is a Tuesday, not a Monday due to the holiday, February 22nd, 2022, and I would ask the city clerk to call a roll please.
House Member Bushy.
Present.
House Member Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
House Member Yaron Scaloni.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, all five of us are here, so welcome everyone who is streaming or tuning in this evening. Present day San Rafael is located in the traditional lands of the coastal Miwok people, and we recognize our history and appreciate all the indigenous people who still reside here today. Thank you to staff, if you're new to a council meeting, you've been missing out for the last two years that we've been doing this. We start our meetings with the staff having their cameras on, just to be reminded of all the fantastic work and people behind that work that happens every day to keep our city running, so thank you all, we are better because of all the work that you do for our community every day. And speaking of virtual, if you're like me, you're probably getting a little tired of virtual meetings, we were joking before in the pre-zoom room about being in the council chambers, and we look forward to when we can have a hybrid meeting, and a hybrid meeting will be a portion in-person in the council, as well as a virtual component for maximum flexibility for our community, so it won't be all or one, it's all obviously virtual now, but people would still be able to call in. Right now, we are hoping we can all cross our fingers for the next month that our first hybrid meeting in the council chambers will be on April 4th. Having said that, we're going to continue to follow the recommendation of Marin County Public Health, and we'll keep you posted if anything changes, but that will be something to celebrate to all be in person, so stay tuned. And until then, we do appreciate you taking the time to zoom in or watch us on YouTube and are glad you're here for tonight's meeting. I will now turn it over to the city clerk.
Thank you Mayor Kate, at this time I'd like to ask staff to turn their cameras off, thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish language simultaneous interpretation, provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish Zoom channel, now through completion of Agenda Item 6A. You can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in Zoom, it looks like the globe, and we've posted a link to the Zoom meeting in the description of the YouTube video. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express your comments, and right now I'll invite Paloma to interpret that in Spanish.
Buenas noches, antes de empezar queremos anunciar que para la reunión del Consejo Municipal esta noche tendremos interpretación simultánea en español por intérpretes calificados en el canal de español a través de Zoom. La interpretación será hasta el tema 6A. Ustedes se pueden unir al canal de español haciendo clic en el icono de Zoom en la barra de funciones que parece un globo. También tendremos un enlace a la reunión Zoom en la descripción de video en YouTube. Go ahead.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube and viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and use the meeting ID 899-2635-9885 pound, or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're commenting through Zoom, please use the raise hand button to let us know you'd like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience any technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and is accessible by selecting the dropdown next to the red live button on the upper left-hand corner of your screen, then selecting view stream on customs streaming service, thank you.
Thank you Madam City Clerk, and thank you Paloma for your help tonight. The first item is open time for public expression, this is anything that is not on tonight's agenda, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, and once again, if you're commenting on Zoom, you'll need to use the raise hand feature, and if you're commenting by phone, you'll need to press star nine. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and then you'll be muted one time has elapsed. We ask that you please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express your comments, and I do see two hands raised.
Hi council members, my name is Yavara Medei and I work with a local nonprofit in San Rafael called Alcohol Justice, and I'd like to tell you all about a current campaign that we're working on with our youth program. We're working on a campaign in San Rafael to change the alcohol retail environment and to make off-sell alcohol retailers safer locations for children to frequent and safer in general for the whole community, but really focusing on how they engage with the community and how a lot of their behaviors promote underage drinking. We do have some youth present, and so we'll see when they get on in the in the public comment. I believe they should be close to up next, we'll see how, who raised their hand first, but essentially, we just want to bring the campaign to your attention and ask for your support, but tonight we're just letting you know that we will be coming back to city council meetings with, you know, more youth to advocate for this issue, and then we'll get into more specifics about exactly, you know, what we're trying to change, about best retail practices for liquor stores, changing the retail window signage and a lot of other issues, but we appreciate your support on this campaign and we look forward to getting into more specifics in the future, and hopefully we'll be able to hear from some of the youth that have raised their hand in the Zoom. So thank you so much, and thank you for everything you do, and looking forward to talking more.
Thank you Yavar, and thank you for all that Alcohol Justice does, we'll see if there's any youth that wants to speak to us, and we're always available even outside of council meetings to meet with your organization and the youth, just so you know.
Good evening everyone, my name is Eric Beherano, and I'm actually one of the youth that Yavara Medei just mentioned, and I'd like to take a little bit of time just to tell you guys a quick summary of our campaign. So, the Youth Action for Safe Stars campaign seeks to change the alcohol retail environment in San Rafael by reducing the harmful behavior of dangerous alcohol retailers that lead to underage drinking. The issue of underage drinking in San Rafael is at the intersection of public health and social justice. Latinx youth in our city are disproportionately affected by alcohol advertisements and normalization. Twenty-five point seven percent of youth under eighteen in Marin are Latinx, and of which the majority reside in San Rafael. By advocating for policy change that supports the wellness of our of youth in our community, we are creating a healthy retail environment in San Rafael, and we would very much appreciate your support on this issue, thank you very much.
Thank you Eric.
Thanks, this is Ava Crisanti, I think it'd be terrific if the so-called progressive youth along with Yavara Medei focused on some more immediate issues, I know they're very concerned about racial justice, but the city of San Rafael has a police-run internment camp on Fifth Street. This is housing a majority black and Latino population with no bathrooms, no showers, no electricity, and I have received continual reports that the police are actually stealing from people inside the camp. They recently stole a backpack from a pregnant woman inside the camp. The conditions inside the camp are an absolute abomination. These medically vulnerable individuals are being forced to live under the 101 freeway where they're forced to inhale fumes when it rains, it is absolutely drenching their tents. You know, I think that the fact that you've been permitted to do this with impunity so far has created a false sense of confidence. We're seeing lawsuits brought against Sausalito, against Nevada, and you know, your intransigence on this point is basically going to accumulate and it's going to make the eventual lawsuits and your eventual liability, it would be far more punishing for the city's finances. You know, it's outrageous that in 2022, we have an internment camp for a majority black and Latino population that makes Manzanar look like the Ritz-Carlton, but these conditions are completely unacceptable, everyone in San Rafael should be ashamed for not calling in about this.
For anyone who's tuning into our council meeting for the first time, during public comment, we accept public comment on any agenda or any non-agenda item at this time, so the public is free to express their opinion on any item.
I see no other hands raised, I'll give everyone a few more seconds. I see no hands raised, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, we'll close this part of public expression and ask the city manager, she, city manager Jim Schutz to join us with his report, and I'm trying to speak slowly again, keep reminding ourselves so Paloma can keep up, so Jim.
Thank you Mayor Kate and City Council, I have one update and one announcement of this evening. I was not present at the previous city council meeting, but I was told that the council asked for a brief update tonight on the downtown transit center during my report, so I just wanted to provide that. And I'm going to start with the basics, the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, which I'm just going to abbreviate as Golden Gate because that's a mouthful, owns the property at the Bettini Transit Center in downtown San Rafael between Second and Third Heatherton to Tamalpais. This is the major bus station downtown with Golden Gate operating routes along with Marin Transit, Sonoma County Transit, Airporters, Greyhound, and other providers. The Smart Train bisects the current transit center, so when trains started running to Larkspur, it caused a suboptimal shifting of bus bays and a reduction of the size to deal with the new bisected configuration, so it no longer works appropriately as it was designed for. For this reason, Golden Gate has been working on relocating the transit center to a nearby area, and Golden Gate is the lead on this effort, but working very closely with the city of San Rafael, Marin Transit, Smart, and the Transportation Authority of Marin, also known as TAM, and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, also known as MTC. So there's a lot of agencies involved in this particular project, not to mention the entire community residents, business owners, community organizations, and beyond. There have been many public meetings and workshops that led up to the release of the draft Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, last year. And on October 4th of last year, that was the last time the city council got an update on the project, so last fall, the city council approved the city's comments on the draft EIR. The draft EIR did contain a preferred alternative when Golden, which Golden Gate calls the whistle-stop alternative on the area around the current Smart Station, and there were two other options studied also, including an option that's partially under the freeway between Fourth and Fifth Heatherton and Erwin, and an area called Fourth Street Gateway, which basically straddles Fourth Street between Tamalpais and Heatherton. So Golden Gate released that draft EIR, and the council commented on it in October. All of those options I just mentioned are quite close to each other, they're all right around in that same area downtown. Since that time, Golden Gate has been evaluating all the comments they received, and they're contemplating next steps, which could would be either preparing the final EIR and releasing that, or first spending more time on the draft EIR, as you may recall, many of the council's comments were bringing up things that they'd like to see addressed in the draft EIR, so Golden Gate will need to determine kind of next steps on that, but that in general, the next step is further environmental impact and environmental review work. Ultimately, the Golden Gate Board of Directors will need to approve a final project after the full environmental process, and the city of San Rafael will also be reviewing the project along the way, and our shared goal and also agreement is that all parties will be together on the best option to move forward when we get to that point. So the final EIR has not yet been released, so it's still going to be a number of months before we get to that point where there would be a final determination. The project has not come back to the city council in the past few months because Golden Gate has been focusing on all the responses and creating responses to all the comments that they received. They are having several meetings with partner agency staff as recent as last Thursday, just to make sure that they are understanding the intent behind all the comments and making sure that they're able to address all of those, so that's the work that's going on behind the scenes right now. The best way to stay informed on that project is through Golden Gate's website, which is golden gate.org, all one word, golden gate.org, and the tab District Projects, and they list all the ways to stay informed. And also, the project will continue to come to the city council from time to time for updates, and ultimately, the review of a final recommendation down the road. The only other item I wanted to bring up is that I wanted to announce a photo exposition about lighting in the Canal community that's taking place on Saturday, February 26th, in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Alto Street in the Canal neighborhood. I know the city council is already aware of this because you took an action in a recent meeting to approve the street closure for this event, but for the community, the event is a partnership of the Canal Alliance, Voces de Canal, and Dominican University, who are all closely working with the city of San Rafael about outdoor lighting in the Canal community. The event is taking place so people can share their experiences and provide input. From the city's perspective, this is great because it'll be very helpful as we think about the different kinds of lighting that's needed, where are the main focus areas, where's the greatest needs, that sort of thing, so we'll be able to take the information and work with the community groups on recommendations, which could be very specific based on specific locations, so that's great, that's kind of the input that we need, are we talking about making existing light fixtures brighter, adding more light fixtures to existing poles, adding new poles, looking at interior lightings like bus stops or any of those sorts of things I think are open for input, and it would be great to get that kind of input, so we look forward to that event, and even more so the improvements and further partnerships that will come out of it. So I just wanted to make sure that our community knew that that was taking place on February 26th on a Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Alto Street. So thank you very much, Mayor Kate, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you City Manager Schutz, and thank you for that update on the Bettini Transit Center, we'll just periodically do that as the timeline is a long one, that's nice to let the community know when we are. I will invite the city clerk to join us to see if there are any comments from the public on either the Bettini Transit Center or the Voces de Canal lighting project on Alto Street.
Thank you, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, and if commenting by phone, please press star nine, and once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment, and will be muted one time it has elapsed. And once again, please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express your comments. I see no hands raised. I see no public comment.
Thank you, I will close the public comment and bring it back for council member reports. Again, I know my colleagues are out and about, very busy since the last meeting that we had two weeks ago, so I will ask Vice Mayor to report out on any meetings or conference, I guess conferences, I don't know who's going to a conference, so any meetings you've attended on behalf of.
Meetings, yes, lots of meetings, thank you Mayor, and good to see everybody. I attended the Chamber of Commerce's Government Advisory Committee, they asked me to come in and just give a quick update, but it was a nice conversation to hear from them of what they see as some of the challenges facing the city, as well as to think about where we could go. I attended the Age Friendly Committee meeting, and it was good to hear that we have a number of people who are part of the Age Friendly Group also participating in the Housing Element conversation, and so I'm glad we have their representation there. On Thursday morning at 5:00 a.m., participated with Lynn Murphy on the annual pit count, which is place, point in time, thank you, point in time count. And thanks to the San Rafael Police Department and Lynn for helping to coordinate that activity that happens in partnership with a number of other community partners in the county. The MWPA, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board Meeting, the real focus and for the council members to take away is that we can't really think of living, you know, having a fire season, we need to be fire adapted. On May 28th, there'll be an event at the fairgrounds called Ember Stomp, which will be a community county-wide event, really trying to help share and spread information, and there is also a new campaign that has a bit of humor involved, that will be, that's starting to really get, send the message again far and wide that we need to be a fire-adapted community, and not just think about wildfire on the hot days in the summer. Just got back from the Oakmont Ribbon Cutting, and as I said to them, every time I drive by on the freeway, I see the clock, and so it's nice to have the clock there, and it's a great addition to our community, and if you haven't had a chance to have a tour, please stop in, it's a great addition to that area, and it's right by Latascana, and I just finished my community conversation for District Four, and we had a great showing, we had over twenty people, and it was really good conversation, and that's it.
Thank you Vice Mayor, I will ask Councilmember Bushy.
It's been a super busy two weeks, I will try and go through this as fast as I can. At the Central Marin Sanitation Agency, super busy, we had a closed session as we begin our negotiations with our unions to hopefully renew our memorandum of understanding with them. We also had a regular meeting, and the highlight of that meeting was a summary of the Food to Energy Program. I see that Patty Galorino has just joined us, she was part of the presentation to CMSA. I just want to remind everyone that this program has been in place for eight years now. On average, on a daily basis, a daily basis, Marin Sanitary collects approximately six tons of food waste in their service district and delivers it to the Central Marin Sanitation Agency wastewater treatment plant, where it is incorporated into digesters and it is converted into methane, which is burned in their cogeneration unit to make electricity, hence the name of the program, Food to Energy. It's been in place for eight years now, is doing a great job of taking food out of our waste stream and turning it into electricity in our in our community. We also, at CMSA, have special meeting to address some potential litigation. The San Rafael Sanitary District also had a regular meeting and a special meeting, in the special meeting, we addressed issues related to the cost of moving a sewer main from adjacent to the bay up the hill further to get that saltwater intrusion. get that saltwater intrusion out of our wastewater collection system. Our, in addition to those San Rafael matters, Councilmember Hill and I are on the M C C M C Water Committee. We were busy too, also in the past two weeks, big meeting with Congressman Hoffman. The takeaway was that he's he is in his office are ready to help us get programs funded, wastewater and water programs funded from the infrastructure bill. He's provided a summary of all of the funding that is available and encouraged us to get our agencies applying. I'm working with all the boards that I have connections with to get those applications in. And, excuse me, in addition. I, excuse me. In addition, Councilmember Hill and I also met with our representative on the Marin Municipal Water District Board, Monte Schmidt, as well as Ben Hornstein, the General Manager of the Marin Municipal Water District. We had a very productive discussion about a long list of issues, and we promised to maintain our partnership and working together for our shared constituents. And finally, I had my conversation too with with my district. And at that meeting, a mystery was solved because there was a question asked. Why is this district the rockinest district in San Rafael? And the answer came out at the end of the meeting. It's the rockinest because we're the only one that's adjacent to a rock quarry. Most people forget about the San Rafael Rock Quarry. It's very large and puts forward a lot of valuable rock for all of the all of the state. But that's what makes our our district the rockinest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy. And yes, you can attend a district community conversation and get bad puns and jokes, which we love. We actually love those. So that was awesome. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. And I will just start out by saying that District Two with Kerstel Park would have something to say about that with Porch Fest. I'm pretty sure that hands down we win the the rockinest district for that reason alone. Yes, in line with what Councilmember Bushy said, we did meet as a as representatives for the city. I won't repeat what she said, but it was a wonderful experience to continue to make sure we're finding our way forward together with our regional stakeholders. I will say that I too held the District Two Community Conversation for the District Two folks. Had went over topics that were related to citywide issues as well as district level matters, as well as many topics raised by community members. So we're looking forward to building on what I'm calling Iteration One and expand our outreach for the next meeting. It was a wonderful experience to connect with the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yuram Guladi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, so we I know that we don't have a lot of time before seven thirty, so I'll go very fast.
No, that's if we can go a few minutes over. So take go ahead and do your report out.
Okay, good. Yeah, so I had a very busy time. The first one I wanted to mention is that we did have our community conversations. We were the first district to have a community conversation. So that's why we haven't had one recently. I just wanted to mention that. And we had our Canal Policy Working Group that includes the county, the city, and several C B Os. Also, I I had I was part of an a conversation with, they call it the Community Engaged Art Class and Voces del Canal with Dominican University students, and it was a great way to talk a little bit about Marina Palma was there from Voces del Canal. I was there as a council member explaining what we do. And our Assistant City Manager, Kristin, was also there. So it was really great to always speak to students about government and how we are all involved with the canal and how we are helping. I also attended the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting with Mayor Kate. And that's the committee that includes the downtown San Rafael with the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Improvement District. So it was my first meeting and it was it was great to be in touch with our business community. I also attended a meeting for the Catalina Speed Calming that we are trying to come up with some solutions to the speed hub that they have right now that is not quite working. So it's just nice to see different options and knowing that some of those solutions might be pilots for other areas in the in that neighborhood that they might benefit from it. Also attended the M C E Board Meeting. And then finally, I attended the M C C M C Economic Recovery. The co-chair is our Mayor Kate. So I will let you do that update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will be quick as well. You're right. We had the Marin County Council Mayor, Council Members and Mayors, M C C M C Economic Recovery. And we all shared what we were doing two years into the pandemic around parklets and other key economic initiatives. As we all know, in San Rafael, we will be working on our economic strategic plan this year for twenty twenty two. So hearing from the other jurisdictions, it's best practices and what they're doing is really helpful. Mary Beth already mentioned San Rafael Sanitation District and Micah, the Canal Policy Working Group. Okay. SMART, as you know, I'm representative on SMART. We have a small ad hoc group looking at their strategic vision. I think I've mentioned that we have a new General Manager, Eddie Cummins. And he's looking at going from the building the SMART train, which is what has been done in that initial phase, and really, how do we start to get ridership back? And also ultimately have the renewal of the sales tax. So part of the group really looking at what is the strategy around that. Let me see, I attended, I was thinking of what Councilmember Bushy was talking about with Jared Huffman. I attended a very long three hour meeting, and it sounded boring, but it was really interesting. The Department, the Federal Department of Energy had a listening session, their Renewable Energy Department. And there's money out there from the federal Build Back Better, really dollars having to do with the intersection between equity and renewable energy. So they were there to hear what a city of our size would be interested in, as well as letting us know about potential funding opportunities. So I think anyone listening knows that we're committed to seeking those dollars and bringing them back to San Rafael. And finally, Councilmember Hill and I started Mayor Kate Walkabout today. For those who've been watching council meetings for a year. I think everybody on this call has, all the council members have spent at least one day with me literally walking into our local businesses, restaurants and salons and retail, introducing ourselves and just hearing what people have to say. We get the good and the bad, and it's all incredibly important. So we'll be doing those walkabouts over the next two weeks throughout all of San Rafael. We're in downtown today, but we will go to North San Rafael at the end of this week with Vice Mayor Kurtz and other parts next week or in the weeks to come. So with that, again, thank you, colleagues, for all that you do. I know it's not just the dais work. It's everything else that you do to build community and reach out. So thank you. We, I will ask, oh, actually, let me, if it's okay with the city clerk, do you want me to take public comment now on the city? Excuse me, council member reports? Or should we do the public comment after? I know there's a timing issue with the redistricting.
Lisa, can I ask Assistant City Attorney for clarification on that?
Sure.
If if it's not too much trouble to wait on the public comment, I think we should proceed with the redistricting matter.
Okay, so the city clerk and I will both make a note to ourselves for any public comment to happen after and which also means that the consent just Assistant City Attorney, if you could stay on. So it means that consent calendar items will also be after the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, so both those two items we will put after. So I should go ahead and open the public hearing and you want to switch interpreters, right, City Clerk?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and talk a lot of our interpreters.
Okay.
So, Blomah, I'll be adding you to the Spanish channel.
Yep. So anyone who's watching, because we're doing the redistricting process, it's very prescribed about how we do that, which is why we are moving the agenda around this evening to meet those requirements. But we will get to the consent items after this item. So I think we'll wait for a thumbs up from the city clerk before we start. Yeah, there we go. I was like, where'd you go? Okay. With that, our interpreters have been switched. So thank you, Paloma. I don't know who the new one is, but we will thank him or her later. And we will now move to the agenda item twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, City Council Redistricting Process. And Lisa, are you introducing this?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, council members. This is the third of our fourth required public hearing in our redistricting process. And as with the other hearings, we have a presentation tonight from our outside counsel, Christopher Scannell, and from our demographic consultant, Kristen Parks. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris right now.
There it is. Welcome, Chris. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too. Thanks for having me back. So if you'll recall, this is the third of the four hearings, and it's really the first one with maps. And so we've talked a lot about the ground rules and the process and everything else, and we're going to briefly summarize those. But I think, you know, in the interest of time and because you've spent so much time listening to me talk already up to this point, I'm just going to turn it over to Kristen and let her walk through the maps that she's she's prepared and we'll go from there.
Okay, and either Chris, Chris, I know you said you spoke a lot, but either you or Kristen should just do a quick context because there might be people listening tonight who have not attended the previous one. So you could just do that before we get into the maps. That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Kristen's got that as part of her presentation.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Kristen. Thank you.
Hey, all. Good evening. And thank you, Chris, for the introduction. And thank you, Lisa, as well for all the work on this project of redistricting. So here we are. It feels very soon to be talking about districts all over again as the city of San Rafael did make this transition just in twenty eighteen. However, twenty twenty was the census year, and every ten years all cities that have district-based elections have to take that new census population data and review it to see if their their district maps are still balanced. And then we also have a state law that is new since you adopted your district map that we also need to review to ensure compliance with. So here we are in our timeline. We do have the next public hearing in March, and we do have a deadline to make sure that the council adopts the map that will be in place for the city for the next ten years. And of course, that's in time to get all the information to the registrar of voters in time for the November election. It's twenty twenty two, it's election year. So a quick review of the legal criteria. And if you have any any questions on those legal criteria, we do have Chris here with us, who can answer them even better than I can. But primarily, we're working with two bodies of law, federal and state. So federal law requires these districts to be equal in population size. And what equal means is not the exact same number of people. But courts say that what's permissible is a total deviation across all the districts of up to ten percent. So what that means is the difference between the largest district and the smallest district should be under ten percent. We also need to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act and ensure that protected classes of voters, if they are the majority of any given area, do have the ability to have a district where they're the majority and that their voting power is not diluted. While we do consider race and ethnicity, to some extent, it can never be the predominant factor in the drawing of any of our district boundaries because that would violate the federal ban on racial gerrymandering. So second body of law or second law we need to consider is the California Fair Max Act. This is the brand new law that wasn't around when the city made this transition to district-based elections. And so this law gives us four criteria that we must consider when we're looking at the district boundaries. And we have to consider these criteria in order of importance. So they are ranked, starting with number one, that all of the districts should be contiguous, meaning that geographically, each district should be one complete piece with no disconnected parts. Second, and this is what N D C recommends that that our clients and residents pay special attention to, is that looking at those district boundaries and whenever possible, making sure that those boundary lines are not dividing neighborhoods and communities of interest that should be kept together within a single council district so that they have the chance to be fairly and effectively represented. So that's the second criteria. Third, we just want to make sure that those boundaries are easily identifiable. And the way to do that, of course, is to draw your district lines along major roads or other significant natural features within the city. And finally, this is the other thing that's worth paying special attention to is that, to the extent possible, state law says districts should be compact. And it defines compactness as not bypassing a nearby area of population in order to take in a more distant area of population. So when districts aren't compact, you often see them snake around or, you know, in the in the case of the canal area, sometimes we do have that long sort of spire and that's not compact. However, we have to remember that these criteria are in order of importance. So if we have a non-compact district, but it exists to minimize the division of a neighborhood or a community, then that second criterion actually supersedes the compactness issue, right? So it's very, it can be very confusing, but that's what we're here to help with is to ensure that the map that is ultimately adopted does comply with state and federal law. Certainly, other factors can be brought to the table and discussed. However, we definitely encourage those other criteria to be considered after we've discussed federal and state law. So here's that current map. And the good news for the city of San Rafael is that this current map is actually population balanced. What that means is that that first requirement under federal law for equal population is actually met by the current map. So even though this current map was drawn in in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen with census data and and population numbers from the twenty ten census, there hasn't been significant enough movement across the city or within the city to throw those districts out of balance. So you can see here that the total deviation for the current four districts is eight point five three percent. And that is below the ten percent maximum that is permissible. N D C has been recommending to our clients this year that they not that they try to keep their total deviation under nine percent because there are some potential legal challenges to the census counts. So eight point five three is below nine percent. So we're comfortable with that. You also see that there is, you know, when you're looking at some of this demographic data, you see that a little over a third of the twenty twenty population of the city of San Rafael is Latino. And that District One in particular is heavily Latino. However, when you look at the citizen voting age population, District One is is only forty two percent Latino. So it's not quite to the level of a majority Latino district yet, but this is something certainly to be aware of and and look at. And perhaps in ten years, you know, if the geography of the districts remain similar, that may be a majority Latino district by citizen voting age population. Oh, there we go. So this is the math. I'm not going to go over it, but for any any, you know, nerds out there who want to understand and also just for transparency purposes, when we're talking about deviation, where we're getting these numbers. So obviously, the easy part of this is the ideal size of a district. So that's you take the total population of the city in twenty twenty, which was just over sixty one thousand. You divide it by the number of districts, which is four, and then you get And then you get that sort of approximate size of, of what each city council district, how many people should be there. And so the other thing to keep in mind is we talked about that state law that says we should minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. This wasn't a legal requirement when the current map was adopted. So one thing that is important for the council to do is look at the current boundaries to see if any neighborhoods or communities of interest are being divided or could be better encapsulated within single districts, particularly if they have a shared, it's shared interests and their geographically concentrated population that would be best represented by, you know, being within one district. So that's something to consider as we look at these boundaries. NDC has made available to the public both a low-tech option and a high-tech option for the public to actually redraw the district boundaries or submit their own proposals. To date, we have not received any maps from the public. So I just want to draw the public's attention to the fact that these tools are available if they're interested in using them. But because there was significant engagement around the initial transition to districts, oftentimes when we don't see people submitting maps, you know, two, three years later, four years later, that may mean that they're satisfied with the current district boundaries. And we certainly encourage members of the public, if you have concerns about the current district boundaries or changes you, you would like to see, we would like to hear that and make sure that that's heard by the council for their consideration in this process. So with that being said, NDC is providing a minimal change map option. And the goal of this map is simply to preserve the current districts to the extent possible while lowering that total population deviation. It, this map does not have significant changes. It does, you can see, if you look at this map and the interactive map that I'll show, you can see that there are some changes between districts three and four. And there's some expansion to, to District One. So all of this is to balance out population, bringing that total deviation to a little over five and a half, 5.55%. So I will show you the map and we can sort of zoom in on these changes. But the goal for this evening is to see, to get feedback on this particular map, but also if the council wants another map drawn or has other goals or questions about the current map that we make sure that that gets addressed. So I'm going to go ahead and switch to the interactive map, which is here on the redistricting website. So we are on redistrictsanrafil.org. And then we click on interactive review map. And really quickly, I just want to zoom in on the areas of change. And the way that we can do that is, right now, we're looking at the current districts. We can pull off the colors and just keep the outlines of the current districts. We can pull on the NDC Minimal Change Map, and then we can see where these differences are. So you can see between districts three and four, in order to further balance the population, some areas of District Four, current District Four, are being added to District Three, which is in green here. Okay, and this is again to balance out population. And then what we did in the Lincoln Avenue corridor here is try to bring it, this Lincoln Avenue corridor, to some extent, in line with the County of Marin's district. But keeping in mind that the county districts are much larger, right, than the, the size of the city districts. So it's not going to perfectly line up. But this is a really an attempt to preserve a community of interest that we have heard from extensively from the public. And so certainly, we want to get feedback on whether or not this, these boundaries or the current boundaries best represent that community. So you will see here that there is, there's been a little bit of change there for population balance. And then what's happening down here, woo, zoomed in way too much. There's some census geography changes. And I just want to show you that. The good news is that I can show that to you by showing you the census blocks. So the reason why the PDF maps that you have, the reason why there's this weird cutout here is just because what was previously, and I'm sorry to zoom, I need to zoom slower. What was previously, if you look at the current districts here, what was previously two census blocks? That came in 2020, one large census block. And so we have to draw any proposed new maps to the current, to the brand-new 2020 district census blocks from the, from the Census Bureau. So let me turn those on. If I can get it. There it goes. So census blocks. So you can see here that in 2020, this area that was previously divided here, right, with this, this red area being part of District Two and this area in the pink line as being part of District One, those were, those are actually joined together in the 2020 census. So we have to decide where this entire area of 255 of a population of 255 people goes. So that's why this area looks different than the current map. It's, it's not in, in, in any way an intention to, you know, make any change other than align with the census blocks. So I know that's a bit confusing. But that's an overview of the Minimal Change Map. And I'm happy to zoom in on any other areas and answer any questions along with Chris Scannell, who is here as well.
Thank you, Kristen. And I will call on my colleagues one after another. But I'm sure one question we all have, does NDC always do a map? Or did you do one because the community hadn't done one and you wanted, other than the last census tracking, that, that's a, that is a cleanup to me. But I guess I was sitting here and curious that it was NDC that put in a minimal map and not the community. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, well, you're exactly right, Mayor Kate. That with, with the current map being balanced, NDC is not necessarily recommending that the city make changes to the current map. However, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that the council has options. And so oftentimes, NDC wouldn't draw a specific proposed map unless the council asked for it. But in this case, we hadn't received any public maps yet. And so I really just want to make sure that we have something to talk about, that we see some areas that could potentially move. And also to, it's always a good idea to bring that total deviation lower. So those are sort of the, the two goals is show, you know, get a conversation going and see how it might be possible to bring the deviation down.
Okay. Well, I'll call on my colleagues. And I think one of the reasons, we had many maps. We did just go through this. We had a lot of community participation. So, and I know, so Councilmember Bush and I were on the council at that point. And I can literally remember every line and corner and everything else. So I just want to provide clarity around that for folks who might not have participated prior to this moment. Okay, let me start with the Vice Mayor. And this is just for question, any clarifying questions right now before we go to the public for input. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Right. Thank you for the update. Yeah. So Mayor Kate, you asked the question that I had. Now, you had indicated that there was some public comment when they were talking about the county map around District One. And I was wondering what the changes between District Four and Three were other, did comments come up through the county conversation with their redistricting for those areas, or was that just done to ensure, to get the deviation lower?
Yeah, so that was, that is an excellent question. And that is not in response to requests from the public or the council. That just reflects an effort to reduce the, the total deviation in what I, I hope is a logical way. But if it's not, then, you know, no worries.
Yeah, it doesn't feel very logical, just because we sort of over the hill, other, you know, there's not, we're only talking about.
We'll do the questions, Vice Mayor.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay.
Yes, I don't think you're alone.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Councilmember Bushi.
Thank you. My questions are, first of all, about the census block issue. Can, can you describe exactly what is before us? What, what needs to happen? So the blocks, as I understand, the blocks we followed before have shifted. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. However, the good news is if you re-adopt the current map, which let me show you that current map now, I'll get rid of that. You do not need to make any changes to the current map because the registrar of voters already has these boundary lines. And so there's no need to make any changes to the current boundaries. However, if we are making changes for any other reasons to the map, we can try to align with the new blocks. But again, that's not a requirement.
Okay, so that doesn't need to happen. Okay, so good. We're, we're making our, our to-do list shorter and shorter. Now that's, now let's turn our attention to the, the Lincoln area. I, I, I wasn't clear what your proposal is there. Are you trying, you're trying to line up with what the county has, but you're not successful? And so you're taking things out of Lincoln and putting it in downtown? Is that?
So what, what we were doing here, and it's really, in many ways, a lot of the same community members from the canal area and from the, the Lincoln Ave corridor who participated in the transition to districting and the creation of this current map, as well as in the creation of the county's map. And so just sort of revisiting these boundary lines and trying to make sure that we are not in any way diluting the, the vote of the Latino community and ensuring that we're taking in what may be parts of this community of interest that we have heard that, that aren't reflected in the current boundary lines. So I know this one area right here is being moved out of District One. But primarily, what, what I was doing was adding a little bit of area here, more in the central area. But again, if these changes are not logical, they're not necessary.
Well, it's not about logic, it's about history. We spent a great deal of time, as Mayor Kate described, going over particularly that, on that area of that district. And what I'm hearing from you is that there's no compelling reason for us to disturb those, those boundaries. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, oh, good. Okay, so that's another thing that we don't need to do. Excellent. Okay, and so then the last thing is the, the shifting from District Four to District Three. And I'm gathering that that was strictly driven by arithmetic. And you picked an area that, that, that improved our, our deviation count from, to bring it from eight and a half percent to five and a half percent.
Exactly.
Okay, and again, just to be clear, that change doesn't need to be made either. There's no requirement for that.
Yes, correct.
And in summary, for all of these things, all of these proposals that you brought forward were, had their genesis in your office as opposed to any comments that came in from our constituents.
That is correct. And so if anything, it should just provide a contrast to the map that you currently have, which is the result of significant engagement with the public and all of those things that you mentioned. So yeah, throwing an option on the table but not advocating for it is what NDC is doing here. So all of the questions you're asking are very useful questions to have on the record. And I think help, help steer us in a direction that's helpful.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Yoren Scullani, do you have any questions at this time?
You know, I did, but Councilmember Bushi had the same question, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Yes, thank you for being here. I had actually just one question that wasn't addressed yet. And I think it's come up in the previous review of this topic. And that is that if we were to move certain boundary changes, depending on which district you were in in the last election, there are certain circumstances where some voters may be either voting in two consecutive district elections or some that were not allowed to vote at all in two consecutive elections. Can you elaborate on that a little further?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. So one of the things that happens when a city transitions to districts for the first time is that there's usually a rollout process. And in a city with four council members, two council members are elected in one election cycle and the other two are elected in, in the alternating election cycle. So if we, if we look back to this transition, the, the first district-based elections in, in San Rafael actually happened in 20...
Twenty.
2020, right? Yeah, I'm looking at it. I'm like, that didn't happen in 2018. So what that means is that we actually have two districts that, that have not voted by district yet. So that is perhaps another compelling reason to not confuse our voters or change things up. But yeah, if we do move boundary lines, that sometimes will cause voters who are in, who are set to vote in 2024, then they may not get a chance to vote until 2026. And we do recommend to our clients that, that to avoid that, unless we are making those boundary changes to serve another legal criterion, particularly under the Fair Maps Act.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think I just want to make sure the public is aware that, that redrawing the lines also has an impact in that, in that regard. So thank you for elaborating that. And Kristen, I don't know if you intended to stop sharing or no longer sharing.
Oh, I'm happy. Yeah, I'm happy to share, share the map again if there's an area that you'd like to see.
I think we're good right now. So that's, if there are no further questions, we will invite the city clerk. City clerk, do we need to give Gilberto a break? Or are we going, can he interpret for another 10 minutes?
Yeah, let's, we, let's go ahead and toggle now.
Okay, thank you, Gilberto.
Thank you.
And once she has done that, we'll open it up for the third public hearing on this item.
Okay, we're toggled. And if you'd like to provide public comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if it's commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. We ask again that you please speak slowly to allow for our interpreters to effectively express your comments this evening.
Yeah, Eva Crisanti, it's hard not to notice that this redistricting effort, every time you do this, it's, it seems to be guided by a white person. And the council itself does not really reflect the fact that you do have a large Latino population in San Rafael. So it seems to be a process guided by white people for the benefit of other white people and never quite enfranchising the Latino community in the canal. This is, this was in 2017, the most racially segregated county in the state of California. And San Rafael's segregation, particularly with regard to the Canal District, was a major part of that. And San Rafael's segregation, particularly with regard to the Canal District, was a major part of that. So I, it's, it's, it's just kind of stunning watching this. I do want to point out that the internment camp that is run by your police department and Lynn Murphy is a majority-black and Latino camp. And many of these people were stripped of their mailboxes by Councilmember Bushy and Mayor Kate Collin with MOU back in, I believe, twenty sixteen. And that really impeded their ability to remain registered to vote. It also shifted the, the cost burden from the federal government, whether it was Social Security or Veterans Benefits, onto the county. But this was all done to try to drive down the numbers, the reported numbers on unhoused people. They, they thought that if they made it extra hard for unhoused people, they would simply leave. Anyway, those people in the encampment need to be registered to vote so that they can at least have some sort of voice in this process.
I see no other hands raised right now. I'll give up one, a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And the question I heard from our speaker was, and I think, Kristen, you spoke to this, but maybe you can explain further why it's not possible. Or for District One, you had talked about having a majority-minority population and maybe speak to population versus voting age, because I think there's always a little bit of confusion about that. And I know when we drew the maps the first time, we worked really closely with our community-based organizations, Canal Alliance, Multicultural Center Marin, to really look at that number. So if you could just speak to that, that was the one question I heard from the public.
Absolutely, and that's a very important question. And Chris, jump in if necessary. But if, if, if it were possible to draw District One as a majority Latino district by our citizen voting age population, then we would present that to you. And NDC was unable to do that. So that's part of the other thing behind the scenes, right, that we're doing is looking at whether or not it's possible to do that. And the minimal change map here is, it's still, the citizen voting age population is hovering around forty percent Latino. That can be quite striking when you look at the total population being, you know, around eighty, seventy-eight, eighty percent Latino. But keeping in mind that citizen voting age population is an estimate of eligible voters who are eighteen and older, right? So, you know, that's, that's something that's going to continue to change over time, but also, you know, may, may be reflective of the immigrant status of, of the community.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to have that further clarification. So I will call on my councilmembers. They can ask any additional questions or just any comments or input. We have heard this for the third time, but it's the first time we've seen the NDC minimal map, so it would be appropriate to give some input on that. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
No additional questions. I would just say that making a change to make a change for very, very small, minimal impact, it just doesn't seem to make sense. We've just gotten into, we're just training the community and all, trying to understand how our districts work and what districts people are in. I think where these, any type of change right now would not really be necessary.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I agree with the Vice Mayor. We need a compelling reason to deviate from these, these standards. And it sounds like standard, the, the lines that, that we just so very recently drew with so much effort. I hear loud and clear the absence of any community input on, 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 on changes being necessary to these district boundaries. And I think we should listen to that silence and go forward with, without making these changes that have been proposed by our, our consultant.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I concur with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bushy. I look forward to our final hearing to make sure we're taking in the public's position. But to this point, to Councilmember Bushy's comment, we're not hearing anything, but look forward to the process playing out fully. And thank you again for this third opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Sculani.
Yeah, thank you. I concur with my, with my other fellow councilmembers as well. And I look forward to the, to the next meeting to see if there's any other feedback. But so far, it seems that, you know, there was a lot of time spent, I know, from the former council to, to elect these maps, and I think they are working fine right now. So, yep, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we have been reaching out to our, the CB, the community-based organizations with whom we worked originally. So they are very well aware that this process is going on. I, I did want to concur with what my colleagues have said. And I wanted to point out something that Kristen had said about community of interest. And you'd said it was not required when we did it before, but it's something we could do. We actually did do that. We talked a lot about community of interest, which is why there is the, the Lincoln Corridor spine. So even though it wasn't a requirement, we actually did go ahead and have a long conversation with that. So as I understand, the next meeting, meeting number four is March 21st. Is that correct? Okay, so unless we get additional public input, we'll consider, we're still looking at the main map. That you've heard the input from the council, that's where we are landing right now. Of course, we'll be open to any further comment at the March meeting. And at this point, I will ask the city clerk to, or actually, sorry, I will ask one of my colleagues for, to make a motion, and it's accepting a report.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in second. Is that okay? Do you want us to spell out the report?
That's okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Sculani.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Kristen. We appreciate it. And a special thanks to Gilberto and Paloma for interpreting this evening. We know that is not easy, and we appreciate your help this evening. So that agenda item has been completed. And because we had a timing issue, we're gonna step back in time, and I'm gonna ask the city clerk. We're gonna do two things. Let me just lay it out. I'm gonna ask for public comment on this, the council member reports.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So we'll have a pub, public input on the council member reports. And then we'll close that, and then we'll go to the consent calendar. And then we'll just go through as is normal, see if there are any items pulled, and then take public comment on the consent calendar. So, and then we'll move on to Agenda Item 7B regarding the organic waste ordinance. Okay, so with that, we will open the public comment that we didn't get to before on council member reports only.
Thank you. And once again, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, you'll need to press star nine. Once you've heard the notification, the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and they will be muted once time has elapsed. And I see two hands raised.
Thanks. I wanted to respond to the comments from Vice Mayor Kurtz and Mayor Kate Collin. Vice Mayor Kurtz talked about the pick count in Lynn Murphy. Something she didn't mention is that Lynn Murphy is serial, serially in violation of basic guidelines put forward by very, actually very conservative organizations about use of body cam. So what I was avail, what was made available to me by your city attorney regarding the body cam, Lynn Murphy and other officers in San Rafael are continually turning on and off their body cam as it suits them. This defeats the entire purpose of body cam. I asked the city attorney to explain this to me, and she claimed that they were following protocol. In fact, they are not. They are just making it up as they go along. It, it, that alone is absurd. There are other police departments, I'd like to point out, in the county of Marin that are handling body cam very responsibly. And they are following the established guidelines to the letter. You know, almost to the point of, wow, I mean, it's, it's really extraordinary what they're doing. San Rafael is a, is a different story. San Rafael has real problems with its police department. I think the correspondence between the city attorney and myself regarding just trying to get these people to keep their body cams on is, is, is pretty telling, not only about the police, but about the inability and the, the lack of interest on the part of the, the city to, to try to rein them in. So I wish I had three minutes. I only have.
Hi there, this is Lori. We're commenting on the council reports, correct?
Correct.
Oh, good. I just wanted to say that the, I don't know if it's the last time you guys walked around the city, which I thought was incredibly cool, and so did many of the business owners that I talked to on C and D Street. I just happened to be there the days that you guys were there. And the only negative thing I heard was they wish they knew because a lot of the owners weren't there. So obviously, it made a big impact, and they wanted to be there, and I hope that this time they get their wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give up one, a few seconds. I see no further public comment.
Okay, so we're closing the public comment on council member reports. And now we're going to the consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent calendar? Okay, not seeing anything that would be held. I will open the public comment. And these are on the consent calendar items five A through five H, accepting public comment on those items at this time.
Thank you. Once again, if you're commenting on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine. You will have two minutes to provide public comment, and they will be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring this back for a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion. The consent calendar.
Move, and then we have a.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Sculani.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Okay, now we're going back to Item 7B. Again, thank you, everyone listening, for being flexible in the order of the agenda. This is the amendment to the San Rafael Municipal Code regarding recycling of organic waste to comply with a Senate bill, for a good reason, good reason that we're, we're looking at this. So we're joined by Corey Bitoff, our Sustainability Program Manager. Welcome, Corey.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Hi, Council. Nice to see everybody.
Hi, Eleanor.
And we're joined by Eleanor Nichols, our Sustainability Fellow, who's been fantastic and working a lot on SB 1383. She'll be part of the presentation. And Rose Radford from R3. As you know, R3 Consultants have been working with us on this and many other things related to Marin Sanitary Service, the rates. And, and so she'll be giving the UNs work tonight for, on SB 1383 in the presentation. So this is an ordinance update in municipal code to comply with, which arguably one of the most significant waste-related laws in California history. It's gonna affect everybody. Our three is, Rose is our three specialist, and she helped us develop this ordinance. We worked with Marin Sanitary Service to develop the ordinance, make sure the language worked with them. And then after she's done, she'll hand it over to Eleanor to talk a little bit about procurement, which is gonna be one of the most challenging parts of the ordinance. And then I'll wrap it up with the timeline. So I'm gonna share my screen, because I forgot to do that. All right, and put it in presentation mode. Great, does everybody see that okay?
We do, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so the presentation is the overview that I just gave. Rose will give the requirements and the municipal code update. Eleanor will talk about procurement planning. Then I'll go into next steps and implementation plan before you open it up for public hearing and questions. So I'll turn it over to Rose Radford from R3 Consultants.
Welcome, Rose.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I think I lost the connection for a moment. It sounds like I'm on.
Now you're on.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, and it's my pleasure to be here. So Rose Radford, R3 Consulting, and we are a consulting company that focuses exclusively on solid waste matters. And we're assisting San Rafael and most of the jurisdictions in Marin on compliance with SB 1383, otherwise known as Short-lived Climate Pollutants Reduction Act. So I want you to keep that in mind as I go through this presentation. SB 1383 is primarily really a climate change bill and focuses on methane reduction. So next slide, please. So the first question you might be asking is, so we're talking about organic waste, so what is organics? And it's pretty easy. It's basically what you put in your green card at home, yard clippings, vegetative matter. What most people in San Rafael probably know is that you can also place food scraps and food soil plate paper in those green containers. This service is also available to commercial customers. And that's, that's sort of the core of the bill. Next slide, please. Organic waste is actually the largest waste stream. It's two-thirds of what's disposed at landfill in California right now. And it also, it, not only could it be redirected to a better purpose by composting and producing something of, of value and worth, but also some of the, what is disposed may actually be edible food that could be recovered and given to people in need. And as we know, California has many food insecure people. So the bill is, is meant to focus on those, those two pieces. Next slide, please. When organic waste is disposed, again, two-thirds of our waste stream, it decomposes in landfills and produces methane gas. Methane is a super pollutant and contributes to the effects of climate change. I'm not going to go into the details of how that's important. I, I think that's all top of mind for everyone. Next slide, please. So SB 1383 is a large bill, as Corey mentioned, that touches on many aspects of the city's own operations, not only solid waste matters. It does build on existing legislation such as AB 939 and AB 32, as I mentioned. Also, more recent legislation such as AB 1826, which mandated commercial organics collection for most commercial businesses. But it builds upon that by requiring all generators to be provided organic and recycling service. And it also includes some other pieces, and I'll get into the details in the next few slides. Next slide, please. So fundamentally, as a local agency, you and all other cities and any entity that holds a contract for solid waste collection, you're required to provide organics collection to all generators throughout the city. Again, residents already have this service. So the only change for residents is that they are required to participate. You're required to establish an edible food recovery program. I'll get into some of these details later. Conduct outreach and education to make sure everyone knows about the new programs. Do procurement, which Eleanor will be getting into. Secure capacity for the additional material that we're expecting. And also monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. And again, this matches and expands upon existing bills. Next slide, please. So if I'm a business or a larger multifamily dwelling, how do I comply? Well, the easiest way is to sign up for organic service. If you don't have it already, call up Marin Sanitary Service and get signed up. You could also backhaul or self-haul organics. And you do need to meet certain requirements that are laid out in the municipal code update that's before you tonight. That's before you tonight. If you don't generate any substantial amount of organic waste, you may qualify for waivers. So you can, uh, apply for that and then you don't need to sign up for service. I think it's also important to note, and you'll see in your staff report that this emphasizes, uh, all businesses and multifamily are also required to provide containers for customer or tenant use so that they can sort their organic waste. Next slide, please. On edible food recovery, I mentioned this before. Businesses may qualify as covered under the law. It's essentially businesses that might have edible food to recover. If you do qualify, you're required to recover the maximum amount of edible food that you can. Maintain a contract with a food recovery organization and records. And the city intends to coordinate with regional stakeholders to further develop the existing robust edible food recovery networks that are in place now. Next slide, please. Is my connection bad?
Yes, I think it is. Do you see the next slide, Rose? It's inspections and enforcement.
Right. Yes, I see it.
Okay.
Thank you. So the city, so what, what's before you tonight is the mandatory ordinance. And it essentially enacts the requirements that I've just described. The city as an entity is required to enforce these requirements, which, uh, will be conducted in close coordination with Marin Sanitary Service. So you've already seen the amendment to the Marin Sanitary Service franchise agreement that covers the majority of the requirements of the law. The hauler actually can do almost everything and Marin Sanitary Service doesn't tend to do that. There are a few components that you can't ask a hauler to do. So that includes violation, the, the issuance of violations. So that would be essentially on the basis of reported violations by Marin Sanitary Service. Other than that, MSS will be doing all the compliance monitoring and will continue to build out the program of a contamination monitoring, which means looking in the containers to make sure that it's being, that the material's being properly managed. Next slide, please. So the city municipal code update, you'll see it's an update that, um, to the solid waste ordinance. So solid waste is a term that we use to describe garbage, recycling, and organic service. So it's an all-inclusive term. We're suggesting that because the, the ordinance does in fact no longer cover just refuse or garbage. We're talking about all three material streams. And also something to note on the municipal code update. So this is suggested as a, essentially a full revamp of your existing ordinance. There is a, a lot of legacy language that's in there. The SB thirteen eighty-three specific language is in gray highlights. So that's the areas where we've updated or added new language specifically for SB thirteen eighty-three. And that's primarily based upon the state's model for what they wanted to see in municipal code updates. Fundamentally, the reason we're suggesting you update is that SB thirteen eighty-three requires all cities to have an enforceable mechanism to enforce the law upon, uh, all of the businesses and, and, uh, and other entities within your jurisdiction. Uh, fundamentally, the municipal code that's before you today, and the reason that I went through all these details about what SB thirteen eighty-three is before I got into this, the code update, is that it essentially just enacts everything that I've just described. Everything that, that applies to businesses and multifamily. So fundamentally, you know, I can walk through each of those, but it's just what we've just talked about. So next slide, please. I just mentioned that there's a amendment with Marin Sanitary Service. So, um, essentially that amendment required Marin Sanitary Service to do the compliance review, align with the container requirements in the law, outreach and education, evaluate the waivers as they may come in, the, the waivers that would exempt a business from being required to subscribe and provide the city with a recommendation as to whether to approve that. And also the majority of reporting to the state. What is left with the city is record-keeping and reporting, which the city will do in coordination with the Regional Joint Powers Authority, coordination on outreach and engagement and education with your community. The procurement requirements, which Eleanor will get into. And then, as I mentioned, the issuance of notices of violation and penalties. Next slide, please. All right, well, so with that, it looks like it's Eleanor's turn. And thank you so much. I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Rose. So maybe we will keep going and then we'll have any questions for you or Eleanor or Corey at the end. So go ahead, Eleanor.
Hey, everyone. I'm Eleanor Nichols. I'm Corey's Zero Waste Fellow for the Year in the Sustainability Department. And I'll be talking about the procurement requirements and planning the city is doing this year to meet the SB thirteen eighty-three bill. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the procurement requirement aspect of the bill is really to create this closed-loop organics recycling system within all of California. The lawmakers, when they are creating SB thirteen eighty-three, knew that by mandating businesses and residents to start composting and diverting that waste from landfill, they would also have to create some sort of market for that increased recycled and recovered organic product. And so they've done this by including these procurement requirements that cities have to meet and creating this circular economy throughout California. The two requirements that cities have to meet are the first, procurement of recycled paper products. And second, procurement of recycled organics products. And I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into what that means and how is cities complying in the next slides. When it comes to recycled paper products, the requirement all cities have to meet is that every bit of paper we procure or purchase has to contain at least thirty percent post-consumer recycled content. And this includes all type of paper. It's not just printer paper or notebooks. It's toilet paper, tissue paper, posters, mailers, anything paper-based. And in addition to that, anything where it's applicable, that paper must be recyclable at the end of its life as well. Currently, the city is meeting this requirement and we were before SB thirteen eighty-three regulations were passed. So we're good to go on that aspect. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. The next portion of it, getting recycled organic products is a little bit trickier. The requirement of SB thirteen eighty-three is that San Rafael procures three thousand seventy-nine tons of organ, recycled organic products per year. This number is determined by a calculator that CalRecycle provides to all cities and it's largely based on the population of the city. Uh, when it's, uh, requires organic recycled products, what that means is compost and mulch traditionally, but it can be anything that is a recycled, a product of recycled organics. So for example, we heard from a council member at the start of this meeting about the Food to Energy Program and how that takes food scraps and turns it into electricity. That also counts towards city procurement targets. Unfortunately, our Central Marin Sanitation Agency and Aerobic Digestor, which does all the electrification, only would make up about one percent of our total procurement target. And that leaves a need to obtain approximately one hundred and thirty-six semi-trucks of mulch per year to comply with our procurement regulations. When we spoke to our Department of Public Works, we found that currently San Rafael is only using about one semi-truck of mulch per year, meaning that to comply with this next year's procurement requirement for SB thirteen eighty-three at our current rate, it would take about one hundred and thirty-six years. So it's a big challenge that we're going to have to meet. But luckily, we've got great studies and grants that we're pursuing and following this year. The first is a CalRecycle Local Assistance Grant, which the city has already applied for. And it essentially will allow us to look at our jurisdictional land for where we can spread more compost and mulch, but also look at other ways we can use that compost and mulch. Such as partnering with the Resource Conservation District in their carbon farming initiatives or developing some sort of rebate program for residents to also purchase compost and mulch to reduce price. The second thing that we're really excited about actually is the Marin Biomass Project, which is being led by Drawdown Marin, Sustainable San Rafael, and other groups. In the graphic on the right, you can see a very basic breakdown of what this project's going to include. It's essentially looking at all the different types of organic waste in Marin County and what those waste streams can be used for. Looking at how they're going to grow in the coming years as a result of this law and what the most effective recommendations from Marin County in how we use these waste streams should be. And that includes organic waste that material, that San Rafael is also going to have to figure out how to use. So as I said at the start, it's, this is probably the most challenging aspect of SB thirteen eighty-three, but we have a lot of really exciting work going into looking at how we can meet it. And that leads us to Corey, who's going to talk about next steps and implementation.
Thank you, Eleanor. I'm so grateful for all our fellows every year. So one of the things that you probably gleaned from all of this, which I think you already knew, is that we are set up ahead of the curve for many jurisdictions throughout California because we have a fantastic waste hauler. We've got a great community that really wants to do this type of work. We've got community partners that are applying for grants and trying to make things happen that go beyond the scope of SB thirteen eighty-three. So I'll just go over some of our next steps and how we're planning on implementing over the next year or so and then give you our quick timeline and then we can open up for questions. So one of the big things that Eleanor just pointed to is that idea of capacity planning. We're going to have to get a lot of mulch and compost, right? What are we going to do with it? How are we going to get it? How are we going to pay for it? So the item earlier on the consent calendar was the ability to apply for the CalRecycle Grant. And so we hope to get that local assistance grant soon, which will help us with that procurement study and looking at things like carbon farming. Also, Marin Sanitary is going to have to figure out what to do with all this material, how they can collect it. They're going to need more routes, they're going to need more drivers, all that kind of stuff, right? And they're going to have to process a lot of it and transport it to places like Waste Management Earth Care, which is going to have to do capacity analysis as well, which they are continually doing too. Um, and then the county and Zero Waste Marin are going to do the larger capacity planning with intention of identifying how much more we're going to need over the next ten, twenty years and whether they can permit more facilities and how we're going to actually, um, deal with all that extra organic material that's going to be coming through the waste stream. Similarly, Marin Sanitary is always looking at their capacity and looking at ramping things up. So Food to Energy always trying to improve that and make, get more people into that program. Two things that they're doing right now, actually three things. One is, um, we have a zero-waste grant fund where some of that money is going to help Marin Sanitary do, um, an analysis of the waste stream to look at the characterization. So we need some baseline data. That baseline data is going to be helpful for us to understand where to put the majority of our outreach as well as to show how well we're doing in the next few, several years. The second thing is they are permitting a local renewable energy facility, which is a hyralysis, um, uh, waste-to-energy plant that would be for organic materials, mainly wood chips and all that kind of stuff that's coming from the wildfire JPA and all those fire fuel reduction efforts and all that extra material which is flowing now. Um, and then being able to, similarly to the Food to Energy Plant, be able to create energy, but then at the end product is a biochar that can be, um, put into the ground and help sequester carbon as well. And then this de-packaging system, the idea that there's going to be a lot of people that put their compost in bags and it's going to be in other types of containers. And this is a de-packager which we approved in the last rate review to be able to pull that organic material out of those packaged items. Another big piece of what we're going to do is community education and outreach. And as you heard from Rose, Marin Sanitary, thank goodness, is doing most of that and they do it very well. They've been doing it for many years and they have direct contact with all their customers. But we are also on the hook for doing that. So again, thanks for fantastic interference. Walter created, Walter Gonzalez and our City Managers Office created this series of webpages without Eleanor's help. And so we have all the material online. We've been able to share that with all the other Marin sanitary jurisdictions. We'll be doing a ton of outreach, including in-person meetings or virtual meetings with Bosso del Canal and Catmending Resilience Council and other folks that work in multifamily dwellings or that interact with people that are going to have to be able to do this in multifamily dwellings and with department managers. We've been working with the Chamber. We're going to be doing a new green-up newsletter with the Chamber. In, in addition, trying to identify ways that we can help, especially commercial customers that might be challenged with this. So last year, our fellow developed this compost bin pilot for indoor compost bins for commercial businesses to be able to comply with that point eighty eighteen twenty-six, with the idea that we could further it this year. And so Eleanor is working on relaunching that in the next month as well so that we can provide assistance to, to businesses to comply. And then, um, we're also going to have to work on how we're going to pay for all of the recording and all the staff time that's going to go into this long-term and then enforcement. Right now, it doesn't make sense for our code enforcement to take on yet another thing. It's going to be fairly significant. So we're working with all the other jurisdictions with Marin Sanitary, Zero Waste Marin, and R3 in the next few months to really understand, what is that order of magnitude? What would that really look like in terms of the staff time needed? And how might we be able to share those services with other jurisdictions? It doesn't make sense for all these small jurisdictions in Marin to be going after this on their own when we all have the similar requirements. So that's our next step. And then some key milestones, this is a refresher again. This is our first reading with the hope that if you pass to print for the second reading, we would adopt it on March seventh, then the ordinance would take effect April sixth. We just need to have an ordinance on the books by April first in order to receive that CalRecycle Local Assistance Grant. Marin Sanitary Franchise Agreement already happened in December. You adopted that then. Reporting requirements, our first report is due April first, but we've done majority of the work for that report at this point, getting ready for this and to the point where we get this in front of you. Then after that, October first will be our first annual report, which will be a more significant report, as well as annual reports each year in August after that. And so we're still trying to understand what CalRecycle really wants from us. They've been relaxing some of the requirements, but not all the requirements, um, and just timeline, basically. And they fully understand as well that it's going to take years to get to the point that we actually have the amount of material to procure every year anyway. So they're not coming down hard on those. Things like the ordinance being adopted and that in, in a certain timeframe, those are the things that are coming down now. And they've stated to us personally that the, um, the procurement analysis we're going to do will be sufficient for them for a procurement requirement for this year, for our October report. And then enforcement doesn't technically start for two years. So we've got a little time to really understand it. So if we don't really figure it out this year for what our compliance and reporting needs are going to be, we still have a little time to really see what that's going to look like on the ground. But my sense is by the time we come to December, we'll probably have a pretty good idea. And then we'll have to go to the next level of edible food generators to have them start to have contracts with edible food recovery organizations, which again, we're blessed here as well to have five different edible food recovery organizations in Marin, which some other jurisdictions don't have that much to rely on. So at this point, we can open it up for comments and questions and the public hearing. I want to tell you that Marin Sanitary Service is on the line as well. So if we make questions for them, we can absolutely ask them to join in. And the request is for a slight amendment as well. We received some comments and we had, um, some great community members with eagle eyes, like Phil Carney, look at the ordinance and give us some, some suggestions. And, uh, we looked at them and identified what we think are the most salient things that really do affect the ordinance itself. Um, and so we're going to make a recommendation that we pass to print with this following addition, which are two lines in the collection containers. One, the first one, which acknowledges that Marin Sanitary, through the franchise agreement, also offers twenty-gallon carts to people that can prove that they don't really need a full thirty-two gallons all the time. And as well, administrative error happened where several words came out of the ordinance, which is this part for organic collection, except in the case of multifamily dwellings. So, um, we're going to recommend that, add that, uh, tonight in real time. Well, uh, turn it over to you to open the public hearing and ask any questions. Yep.
Thank you. And I think there's some, if you can just make sure you're muted, if you're not speaking, that would be great. We're getting some feedback. Thank you for that presentation. It's a lot of information and I know, uh, it has been talked about at the Climate Change Action Plan, of which Councilwoman Urines Gulati is the, um, the, the chair of that. So I know our community's been incredibly involved and I'm sure there are going to be questions. So, um, and I see that MSS is on the call. Nice to see you, Justin. Nice to see you, Ruben. Thank you for joining us. Let's start with some questions. I'm sure there are going to be a few. Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Thank you. And great report to, to Rose and Eleanor and to Corey. It was really very helpful and very easy to understand the, wow, the whole MSS group is here. The, to understand everything, so thank you. Um, about the food recovery groups and organizations, we are lucky that we have five of them. They, will they collect from individuals as well? Or are we really, is that really only for commercial?
Thank you. Good question. Only for commercial and the requirements are only for commercial that meet certain thresholds. So for right now, it's large-scale cafeterias and places that can, that create a lot of edible food. Um, and so they're the folks that typically are donating. Um, and so they're the folks that typically are donating um, packaged food to the food bank. The tier two, the next one in two years, will be more along the lines of large restaurants, hotels that would donate edible food to places like ExtraFood.org.
Great. Um, another question is around, actually around the schools. When you mentioned cafeteria, does this apply to the schools? Because the kids never eat, drink.
As somebody who volunteered at lunchtime at my daughter's elementary school years ago, I can totally empathize with your comment. Um, I believe that's the case. I'll ask Rose to answer that definitively, but that is, that's my understanding.
Sure, yeah, happy to help. So yes, any local education agency facility with an onsite food facility is required to participate as a tier two, so that's starting in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and MSS then would also then, would we be, who would be the one who would be validating that they're doing what they need to do?
That would fall on us. So that's, that's one of the requirements that really falls on us. We need to make sure that they have contracts with these edible food donation agencies and that they keep those records for reporting. So that's one of the things that would fall under our compliance. Um, Marin Sanitary though is, because they have contact with all these generators and they know who they are and they know what size they are, and whether they should be a tier one or tier two will be a tremendous partner in helping us identify them. But in the end, we have to do that, that inspection or enforcement.
Okay. In the multifamily units, do they currently have different bins? I mean, I know I've seen the large, the large containers, but I haven't seen the different recycling bins and compost bins. Uh, do we already have that in the multifamily units?
That is something, I'll actually ask Marin Sanitary if they wanna answer the order of magnitude, but that's something that is a growing process. Some do, but majority don't, is my understanding, Justin.
Yeah, so under a previous regulation of in eighteen twenty-six, multifamilies did have to have organic service, but it was focused on the green waste, yard waste, not the food waste generated at the multifamily. So um, thirteen eighty-three expands that. They will need to recover the food waste as well. But, so to answer your, your specific question, uh, yes, a number of multifamilies do have organic service. Some are capturing some of their food waste, uh, but there will be, need to be a, a much expanded effort around uh, multifamily compliance with all organic waste generated.
Yeah, I could see that being, all right, I will hold other questions till later and hand it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Bushy.
Just to follow up on the multifamily um, uh, issue. Um, I know we've been working on that for some time, and there's been a series of, of um, outreach efforts. Um, Corey, what's, uh, have we made progress? Um, are we, are, are we on track on? Uh, how, how is, how is, how, how is that process rolling out? And to tie it back, do you see this ordinance helping um, in any of that outreach effort?
Hey, um, I, that's gonna be one of our biggest challenges in multifamily, you know? And there's a lot of different types of multifamily, and the requirements are a little different, whether you have four units or less versus if you have five units or more. Um, if you have two units, you may be able to share a container, but any more than that, you can't really share a container. Um, challenges with waste management in general, when you have uh, multifamily properties that have a lot, a lot of subletters as well. Um, and challenges with adequate amount of waste disposal in general. Marin Sanitary has really ramped up their efforts, and I'll let them speak to this as well in terms of outreach and have um, some new outreach staff that have been specifically targeting multifamily and working with them, um, providing a lot of materials, going to connect Community Resilience Council meetings and other meetings with community members and groups to, to help encourage. They're providing free um, indoor compost piles for kitchens. They're working directly with apartment managers. We're collaborating with the Illegal Dumping Program as well, since we're also reaching out to apartment managers, so that we can provide information on both things and encourage and control and provide incentives to it, all that for both at once. So, so there's a lot of work going on. I, I should ask Marin Sanitary if they wanna add anything to that.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, um, so we have about sixty percent of our multifamilies that do have organic service currently. So as I mentioned though, that, that's really been focused on the, the green waste, not so much the food waste. So I think Corey did a great job describing our efforts. Uh, we've been doing a lot of uh, onsite training uh, for residents to, to help encourage. Uh, I know, you know, sometimes we'll show up and out of the complex. We only have a few people, but we've, we've seen a lot of interest uh, and, and a desire to implement these. Our CalRecycle uh, at the state level has really done a great uh, uh, marketing campaign in getting this out there. So a lot of people have heard that these new requirements are in place and, and they wanna know what they need to do to comply.
All right, thank you. You're our eyes and ears in the community and are the, the, the front line in this effort. So we're, we're relying on you to um, bring back to us the um, the information and um, the analysis of if, if there are other things that we need to do to assist you um, in achieving these goals. So thank you for all that you've done, and um, we're here to um, help you take this to the next level.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy. Uh, let me see, uh, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Corey. Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Marin Sanitary for all being here. Um, I had a few questions. Um, one came up as I'm reading through and thinking about the point when violations would be assessed. Is there consideration for a ramp up period to that where by, say, courtesy citations could be issued? What is the thinking around that, or is that something to consider further down the road, once we have more of a, a baseline for uh, data?
That is a good question. I have not heard about courtesy violations. Um, is that something, Rose, that you've heard? Is that a consideration?
Um, yes, so CalRecycle has a sort of specific um, language about uh, violations in the process. And there is a um, a cure period of sixty days after the notice of violation is issued and prior to the assessment of any penalties. So that would be enough time to uh, give the, you know, notice and potentially further notices to make sure that people are aware of what's happening. And as Corey also mentioned, we have two years from now until twenty twenty-four before you're even required to begin issuing notices of violation. Um, and during that period, that, that's considered an educational period. So you might still um, be aware of businesses that are out of compliance and provide them educational material during that period.
Thank you. And then I think, I think it's self-evident in the report, but, but really, this would be uh, Marin Sanitary, that's pretty much the front line for this. Is that, is that accurate as far as kind of reporting and, and issuing um, these notices or, or at, when the time comes to the citations?
Yeah, and you know, I wanna clarify a little bit. So we're on the hook for the actual reporting, but unless the data is gonna come from Marin Sanitary. And they're using a program called Recyclist that they vetted several years ago and have been using successfully. And now Zero Waste Marin has purchased that program to assist as well. So this year, we're trying to figure out exactly how to do that and how to streamline that for all the, for all the um, jurisdictions involved and to see if Zero Waste Marin can take on more of that, or if we're still gonna have to do the majority of that ourselves.
Thank you. And I'm not sure I heard this in the presentation, maybe uh, because the concepts of self-hauling and waivers, are, are those pretty miniscule, or the, like, what, what is the kind of order of magnitude of incidents of self-hauling and, and request for waivers?
That's a really good question. Thank you. So um, self-hauling, for the most part, right now, is back hauling. And it's places like Safeway or Target where they may bring all their products in and then ship all their cardboard back, for instance, for recycling. So it's yet to be seen uh, whether those types of businesses that are receiving a lot of product every day uh, will do this as well for the organics. There's a provision to be able to do that. But overall, when we've talked to R three Marin Sanitary, the belief is that it's very small amounts. And so what we did was we put in a provision um, to make sure, and this is part of SB thirteen eighty-three's intention, that self-haulers actually um, track what they're doing and be able to provide that to the city if we should request it, so that we can get a better sense of how much material that is. Um, and I'll see if Marin Sanitary or Rose has any other comments about the order of magnitude, but my understanding is it's fairly minimal.
A quick comment, that also um, things like landscaping debris that might be hauled by a landscaper would qualify as self-haul as well. Um, you know, uh, our expectation is that the material is being directed mainly to Marin Sanitary Service's own uh, transfer station at which it, it's then uh, directed to composting, so it's al- already being handled appropriately. Um, and uh, in terms of regulation of the, these activities, as, as Corey mentioned, um, the ordinance does require all self-haulers to keep their records and provide them upon request. So if there's any indication of uh, foul play, then you would have full access to those required records. It would be a violation if they weren't keeping them. And also, there's a provision that we've included here that allows the city specifically to restrict or prohibit that self-hauling activity if the city determines that the self-hauler is not um, complying with the requirements. Again, that's re- reporting or uh, record-keeping. Uh, and it's also source separating and making sure that the material ends up in the right place. Um, that's completely aside from any uh, possibility of um, a self-hauler, for example, illegally dumping the material which is handled in other parts of the code.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Sorry, go ahead, Justin.
Sorry, I was just gonna give a little insight into the waiver uh, side of your question. Um, so currently, there's, there's an opportunity for a waiver if you produce less than twenty gallons of organic waste per week. Uh, it also, for those that have um, uh, you can give the numbers here. There's also, depending on how much total waste you generate, it's either twenty gallons or ten gallons per week. And so um, we estimate that about, maybe about five hundred businesses will qualify. So, you know, a, a fairly substantial amount. Uh, these could be office buildings that only have one, one uh, cubic yard of total of waste of, waste of material, or ninety-six gallons of waste material and, you know, twenty gallons, which would, would not be organic, or which would be organics or less. Sorry, this is confusing. About five hundred is what we estimate, uh, that there might be that could qualify. And, and we see this as a way to help achieve compliance with this regulation. So we um, we've worked on a, a waiver form, and we'll be working with businesses to get through that process, uh, as Corey described.
Great, thank you for the additional detail.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I, I agree that it was really easy to understand. And um, and I, you know, I'm really happy to have um, um, Marin Sanitary District to be able to partner with us, because I think uh, when I think about education, it's going to be amazing. So my, I guess my question, when I think about restaurants and cafeterias and uh, the food waste, there is the one that the, you know, the leftovers, when people have had their meals and they have the, that food waste, and then the one that maybe hasn't been cooked and, and is going bad. So are you making a difference on that type of food waste, or is all going? Because I imagine that the organizations that they pick up, the food waste are the ones that they have been untouched versus the other ones, or how, how are you handling that? Does it go to the same pile?
Is it, uh, are you directing the question to Marin Sanitary or to me, or do you mean, how's the city gonna handle that, or how's, how's Marin Sanitary, or?
I think um, how is, how, how are the businesses going to handle that? Because I assume that there's going to be, I mean, are they going to have to deal with two different? One will be Marin Sanitary for the green compost, and then they have to partner with the CBO, whoever is picking up the other food, or are they all going to put in one pile? Uh, how, how are you going to regulate that?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that question. Yes, that is an important piece of our education. And we are required under the law to identify who the tier one and tier two generators are. And that's really not gonna mean small restaurants. That's gonna mean larger entities in, for the most part, and we have to be clear with them. And so that's why we developed the website as well, and we looked at other sites, you know? It's not like we came up with all this ourselves. This is a lot of common language everywhere. And I think one of the benefits of this being a state law versus, you know, us deciding as Marin County to do this and surrounding jurisdictions are not, is that it's gonna just level the playing field. Everybody's gonna know what's required, and the requirement's gonna be similar, almost exactly the same from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So if you're running a restaurant in one place and it's a large restaurant, you've got another one in San Francisco, well, it's, it's pretty much the same thing. And you know who those food recovery organizations are, and you'll have very clear information about who the contact will have sample contracts that people can use. Matter of fact, um, the food bank already has contracts and they have, or they believe that all the tier one generators are already donating, and already they have contracts with almost all of them already. And so it's, I think that it's gonna be fairly easy for two reasons. One, the order of magnitude, it's not gonna be that many businesses that have to donate edible food. And two, that it's a very common um, process now, and all the food recovery organizations know how to do it, and they're making that context. So what we'll do on occasion is Justin will call me up and say, hey, you know, there's this business here that we think is really a tier two generator, and they should be donating, but we don't think they're donating yet. We'll connect them with a food recovery organization, and then they'll take it from there. Does that answer your question?
It did. Thank you very much. And um, I'm, I'm assuming, you know, when, when people have like the green waste that goes like into packaging, um, how will they handle that?
So for instance, like Trader Joe's or something that has like a packaged food, and now they gotta get rid of it. Are they gonna cut it open and dump it or not? This is an interesting question that I've actually had myself, and meaning to ask Justin, is with the D-bagger or D-packager that they have, um, and whether the intention is to allow a restaurant or a business like that to continue to do that, or to ask them to depackage it themselves. And I, I haven't gotten into the details enough to really know what that's gonna look like. I don't know, Justin, if you wanna answer that, or anybody else from Marin Sanitary?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm happy to. Patty, feel free to, to weigh in as well. So that's one of the great benefits of this new machine that, that we'll be installing, uh, is that we can do that. So when we had the power uh, shut down two years ago, a lot of that food that was packaged, we were not able to recover the organics from that. Uh, this new equipment will be able to. So uh, we can, we can put a, a pallet of um, expired, you know, packaged food, and it separates the, that plastic and even, you know, some of the cardboard packaging from the organics that we wanna recover. So it'll be a great addition to our processing capabilities.
Great. Yeah, that's exciting. And um, and my last question is around rodents, because you, we know there is a huge problem, especially in downtown. And um, I don't know if there is anything that can be done around that, but have you thought about that in general, just to try to, I, I don't know how to control rodents, but when I had my restaurant in downtown, it was a huge issue. So now when you're thinking about uh, food composting, you know, um, there is a way to put it like with the, with the green, the, the waste from the backyards, but for the people that they are like big restaurants, that they are just recycling. Is there anything you can do around that?
Patty taught us the phrase, the ick factor many years ago, which included this. I, I, I'll open it up for anybody else that wants to address it, but um, they had the food waste already. The food waste was going in dumpsters or things that were less protected from rats. Now they'll have the opportunity to put them in green carts that are enclosed or use other types of carts and really be able to address it if they get it out of the regular garbage stream. Um, it seems like there's a potential to actually cut down on the rodents, but I'll see if anybody wants to address that, especially Marin Sanitary.
And I'm happy to jump in on this topic of rodents, since I live near the downtown and appreciate their presence in my own home and in my yard, but um, uh, we do whatever we possibly can, obviously. Corey's absolutely right. Um, they were in one container. The new container will be even more airtight, and we'll have milk runs that service enough, Justin, so that, that food is not sitting out so much. So through God's grace and knocking on wood, um, we'll make every best effort to make sure that this is a seamless process, and we'll stay at least one step ahead of the rodents. And I just wanna take a moment to thank for taking some of the considerations that we have put forth in the way of edits. Uh, our concern has been, and I, I'm glad to hear that we're thinking that it'll be small, the illegal dumping aspect of uh, or that potential. And when this first started to hit the road, in fact, I was walking my dog around Coleman School and there was someone illegally dumping on Coleman School. We found out from the school district, it's a big issue. And um, so we wanna make sure that, not necessarily that the work comes to us, but that it's handled appropriately so that we don't have a rodent issue. I'd also like to um mention that our outreach team is spot on and just rock stars. And they've done a great job at reaching out. They're tireless and they're um, along with Ruben and Jennifer and Simone and Carlos that you probably, many of you have met. They've done a great job in reaching out to absolutely everyone. And this is something, this organics diversion that we've been doing for some time, the green waste composting. Now the residential food waste with green waste, that's been going on for a number of years. Uh, Justin's absolutely right. The Tiger Dpackager that we saw up in Anacortes will be able to allow us to expand. And God forbid the lights don't go out again, but I remember the losses suffered by United Market, for instance. Um, we're really hoping that that won't wind up becoming another issue in a landfill. Um, that and our biomass investment, we've got an application before the city of San Rafael. We're vested for one megawatt. We're looking at two megawatts for the dry organic waste. So I just want everyone to feel confident that we're primed to handle this material. The procurement will be challenging. We're gonna have to be creative with that. But um, everyone should feel very good about the fact that we'll be compliant as a whole community with something that will make the environment better for the next generation. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any, any more questions, Councilmember Mica? No? I just, I, and my colleagues asked great questions. And again, thank you for a great presentation and the partnership we have with MSS. As Corey stated, because you've already, what you've already done, we're ahead of many other communities. Um, so my questions are all around the procurement, because that just gives me massive amounts of pause. There's a, for all the obvious reasons. Um, so I'm just gonna ask the most obvious question upfront. Are there, do we currently know what the penalties are going to be if we don't meet those thresholds?
Um, Rose might be best to answer that one.
I mean, we're gonna aim, we're gonna try and do it, but a hundred and thirty-six semi trucks, which let's not talk about the GHD from the emissions of those trucks. I'm not even gonna go there. But so I would love your input, Rose.
Sure, Mayor, Mayor Kate. Um, so it's, uh, I think everyone has already stated, it's, it's a problem that all cities throughout the state are experiencing and have aired their concerns to CalRecycle in various forms. Um, and as Corey mentioned, uh, CalRecycle has indicated that the efforts that we put forth tonight seem to be sufficient to, for CalRecycle's purposes, at least for this year. Um, and I think probably for another year or two. Um, at which point, I think that CalRecycle and we will all have a lot more information about potential uh places for this material to go. I, I, I think that, you know, land applying for carbon sequestration purposes is, is a certainly a, a y- good use of the material. The question is, how high can you pile it? And, you know, where, where does it make the most sense? And, and is there ever a point where, you know, we're buried under a pile of compost and can't get anymore? Um, and, and those practical realities, I think, are um, the CalRecycle is aware of those. Um, so I'm hopeful that in the coming uh, few years, we'll have um, a, a more permanent fix to this question and problem that, that all of the cities are facing. That said, right at this point in time, the um penalties would be the same as uh, uh violating any other part of the law. Um, so they are steep.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is, right now, it doesn't seem like there's a move to start penalizing right away. But that is on the horizon. And the penalties can be steep. It can be everything from withholding funding. I mean, that, that, we get penalized from this, or not, we, we never do, because we do things well, but no, in, in, when, when they penalize cities, there's a lot of different ways that they can be done. It can be withholding funds. It's not always just a straight monetary. Uh, anyway, okay. More to come on that, which actually gets me in the second part of the question, Rose, which you started to get to. So I know we've already teamed up with, I'm trying to think of all the logos, Ross and Larkspur, the different ones that are through the franchiser agreement. What I'm thinking is that we're near a lot of ag land. And so when they look at it, are we, and I see Eleanor nodding her head. When we're saying Marin, are we actually looking at all of Marin County? So it's not just a franchiser agreement, but when I think of carbon sequestration out in West Marin, like, that's pretty cool. Um, is, is that, is, is, so you know, maybe Eleanor, you can speak to that. Is that something that's realistic? That it's not just San Rafael? We're actually a much wider area that we can utilize the procurement materials.
Yes, I'd love to speak on that. That's actually one of the most exciting things about this Marin biomass project I talked about is um, they're going to be looking at all the different uh organic waste streams in the county and then looking at countywide use. So carbon farming in West Marin is arguably, for me, one of the most exciting aspects of that. But they're going to be looking at everything from, you know, this organic waste from SB thirteen eighty-three, wood chipping from wildfire prevention, every type of weight, uh, stream, and then every type of use for it. So um, there, there's a lot, um, there's a lot of different opportunities besides carbon farming as well. And they're going to be looking at what's the most cost effective for Marin County to pursue if we were to do a coordinated effort. And what is the most um environmentally effective as well? So it's a really exciting project and I think it's set to launch in this year as well. I think, I believe they just got their funding for it. Um, so we should know actually fairly soon what that's going to look at, like on that comprehensive countywide level.
Yeah, no, that is exciting. And we are in some ways much better positioned than communities that don't have a farming or ag land adjacent. So we'll wait to hear from the county on that. Um, okay. There might be additional questions that come up from the council or from the public, but let's ask the city clerk to come on and uh, get public input on this um item.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. If they're commenting on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're dialing in by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear the notification that we're inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and they'll be muted once time has elapsed. Go ahead, Andrew.
Hi, thanks, everyone. This is Andy Nodjeris with the Agricultural Institute of Marin and just wanna thank the council and MSS for your work on the ordinance and really wanna appreciate Corey for all of your work and leadership and making San Rafael more sustainable. Um, we're really excited about the implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three. And I just had two comments um for consideration. So number one, one thing that we're really struggling with in our food and business community is the continued use of uh PLA compostable plastics. And just trying to think about what are some options to help more of our business and food producers to switch to bio-certified plastic or reusable containers and vessels as part of the implementation. Um, we just know how much contamination of organic compost is a challenge for Marin Sanitary Service. So just if that's something that can be considered upfront and, and happy to work with the team and thinking through that. The second comment as well is, I, I think there's also a lack of understanding of the tax benefits for uh private businesses that donate food and the enhanced federal tax credits. And I think that would be important to think through, to get the business community on board about what are ways that they can reduce their uh taxable income. So if there's ways to help spread that message too, I think that will be important as well. And just wanna thank everyone for your work and leadership here.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you for all that you do.
I'd be happy to talk about the plastics when it's time.
Yeah. So, yeah, what we'll do is we'll all, I think we're all making notes of any questions. And at the end, um, after we get public comment, we would love to get your input. Thanks, Patty.
Hi, good evening. Uh, this is Bill Carney, uh Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. And um, wanted to get back to basics a little bit that uh, by pointing out that lowering landfill methane emissions uh by requiring residents and businesses to properly dispose of organic material uh in green carts uh is a really significant step in this city's efforts to achieve its greenhouse gas uh reduction goals. Um, and we're certainly, we certainly congratulate you and staff and MSS and R three and everyone else uh at getting us um this, this far. Um, though these emissions amount or account for a relatively small portion of our contribution to climate change, it's one that municipal regulation like this can dramatically reduce. Uh, in fact, this ordinance is an example of the kind of careful and practical and systemic rule setting uh needed to successfully guide our city through the climate crisis and into a sustainable future. Um, in short, San Rafael residents can reduce their community's carbon footprint by over nine thousand tons a year just by properly taking out the trash. We have provided staff of a few suggested clarifications of the ordinance's language um without uh changing its substance. Uh, these include, including um greenhouse gas emissions in the purpose, uh stated purpose. Uh, also clarifying that prohibited disposal, in the prohibited disposal section, that we're talking about green carts, but also recycling and garbage carts as well. And finally, um retaining the words refuse and recycled materials rather than solid waste uh in the title of the ordinance. So we really convey that message that, you know, we're not talking about waste anymore. We're really talking about lots of very good resources. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Uh, hello. This is Belle Cole. You hear me?
Yes, Belle, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. This is quite wonderful to see such people I've been working with for quite a while and all together here talking about the progress that's been made and the ordinance I'm here to uh uh express the views of the, of OFA Marin, but also on behalf of the Marin Biomass Project. And I thank you, Eleanor, for starting out with uh, really kind of stealing my thunder. But it was really good getting your perspective on this and seeing our chart uh there in your materials. Um, I just wanna say that the, the Marin Biomass Project fits within the overall vision of what you're doing and of what the state wants to do. There's, there was a statement made that uh, that I hope you all read. It's in my letter. Uh, the twenty twenty CalRecycle report, which uh I recommend. But I don't have much time, but I just wanted to say that uh, that the study is going to be valuable to all and we are gonna have a collaborative in which practically all people who are interested in this would be participating. And the marketable uses of biomass to be explored include compost mulches, biochar, and uh all the things that we had been talking about. So uh, we're very pleased to be able to work with you in the, as we move ahead, because this project, by the way, is a two-year project. We just got the funding. Uh, it probably will take two years for the whole study. It is a study and a collaborative with the two parts of it. But we'll be working on some of similar projects and uh we're gonna be hiring consultants to work with us on this. And.
Thank you, Belle, and thank you for the input also that you've given to the council. We have um read it and received it. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate. Good evening, Mayor Kate and esteemed council members. My name is Arlen Benavides and I speak as an ally of Sustainable San Rafael and residents in the Canal neighborhood. Uh, methane emissions amount to approximately four percent of San Rafael's greenhouse gas emissions. A low quantity indeed, yet significant because methane warms the earth eighty times greater than carbon dioxide. I wanna mention that I've given a listen to community members in the Canal neighborhood and want to inform that they're curious and inviting of waste management education. Many wonder who they can contact to implement green bins at apartment buildings. And to that end, I'm pleased to see that the ordinance recognizes the challenges of finding space for recycling in some multifamily buildings. However, in addition, Sustainable San Rafael urges the city to work with building owners to provide the space needed in existing buildings and to require adequate space for proper recycling and all new developments. Also, I personally advocate for the city to continue to co-create a system that is inclusive of community residents. And wanna thank Sustainability Manager Corey Bitoff and Marin Sanitary Service for already doing so. Including the building of a waste management system that minimizes costs and maximizes convenience for residents. Fosters opportunities for community stakeholders to engage with training and paid volunteer roles to keep the system clean and functional. Allows for robust outreach to unveil system changes and inform residents. And continues to change and reshape goals to collaborate with all constituents. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Arlen, and thank you for that outreach that you've done and will hopefully help us do in the future. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Annika Osborne and I've been a resident of San Rafael for close to twenty years. I am also representing Su- uh Sustainable San Rafael. When I see impactful ordinances like this, it makes me feel very happy to live in San Rafael. Thank you, Corian team and Marin Sanitary Services for your strong leadership in climate action. I'd like to emphasize the importance of reducing greenhouse gases by all means possible. The biggest impact will be getting people out of gas cars, since for many residents, driving represents half of their GHD emissions. Electrifying our buildings is also an important solution and composting organics is significant, as this ordinance provides for. I would like to suggest that the city include GHD reduction among the purposes of the ordinance. So the impact of this action of composting is clear for everyone. I would also request that you retain the current, the current words, refuse and recycled materials in the title of this ordinance rather than the term solid waste to convey the key concepts that all materials need to be considered as resources rather than waste. I like all the Rs, including refuse and refuse. Um, I'll also add that about eight years ago, when my kids were at Sun Valley Elementary School, I helped set up a composting program for the school. We brought in green bins and offered lots of interactive training opportunities on sorting landfill, recycling and compostable items. We also trained our green team kids to be composting helpers each day at lunch. And we even asked a yard duty staff member to monitor the composting. It's not as easy as we think, but since composting will be mandatory at schools, maybe there can be some school-to-home educational opportunities. I realize that it's a little different with adults, but I'd like to emphasize the importance of clear language as well as repeated training, maybe even videos to help our vid- our residents as they transition to.
Thank you, Annika. Great suggestions on schools. So thank you.
Yeah, Ava Crisanti here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm always kind of nonplussed when I hear these well-meaning liberals call in um with their concerns about the environment. I mean, it, it really does sound like an awful lot of rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic. Um, for the um, small but important, you know, change that you're gonna get, uh, reduction in emissions um, and waste that you're gonna derive from all of this virtue signaling. Um, very little has been done in the city of San Rafael to um tax SUVs um to, to create disincentives for people to drive. Um, and many of the people you heard call in uh right now probably will be taking um some sort of luxury vacations um that require air travel um with no regard for the carbon imprint of that. Um, meanwhile, you have a group of majority black and Latino unhoused people um who have a very small carbon footprint and who, it appears both to them and to people who bother to take the time um to investigate the camp that your, your, your police are running on Fifth Street, that internment camp with no electricity, no bathrooms and no showers and no other amenities, including no AED device, which resulted in the death of a woman on December ninth in the camp. Um, you know, it really seems like you're trying to kill them off. Um, it, you know, council meeting after council meeting, I hear these quote unquote woke, progressive, green, whatever they are, call in and pat themselves on the back. Uh, how many of these people will go down and take a look at an internment camp, a majority black and Latino internment camp run by your, your police department on Fifth Street? black and Latino internment camp run by your police department on Fifth Street?
Good evening, council members. This is Larry Minikis. I'm with the M-S. And I don't want to repeat what Bill Cole and Bill Carney had to say here. I do agree, it caught my attention when the word waste was used. We're really looking at a regenerative economy, and it's important, terms are important. I just want to give a little background rather than a speech here and say that we've been working on this since 2020, and we've had dozens and dozens of meetings, and we're quite proud of what's happened here. We're the only, of the five grants that were given, we're the only county where it's only one county getting the grant. All the other counties, all the other grants were given to several counties at once, and they're looking, they're looking at different issues than us. Some of the trees are unique here, and will affect a lot of the Bay Area and a lot of the coastal communities here. So what we're doing is going to go far beyond, in the study, far beyond just San Rafael, just Marin alone, and is really quite groundbreaking. So we look forward to your participation, all the help we can get. We're really excited about the study. We know the governor's office is really excited about what we're doing here. And with that, that is my comment this evening, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Larry.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give it one in a few seconds.
Okay.
I see no further public comment.
Thank you. So questions I had heard, and Cory might have caught a few more, was addressing a compostable plastics issue. Secondly, talking about the tax benefits of food donors, maybe that was more a comment, but I do think that's one worth mentioning in terms of outreach. Specifically about the ordinance language, there was some, several callers about very specific words, and I know that Cory has been working on that. And then there was a comment or a question about how do we have adequate space in multifamily built, already pre, you know, old buildings for recycling space and built environments versus newer, I mean, newer buildings, it's much easier. So, and I know we've touched on those all a little bit, but I always think it's worth responding when the community has brought those up. So Cory, I'll turn it over to you to work your way through that list.
Okay, sounds good. Yes, the PLA containers, all the compostable, supposedly compostable plastics, has been a challenge. My understanding from talking to folks in San Francisco is that even when they've been taking those products for a long time, that they're starting to really see the disadvantage of having taken a lot of those products. And so it's definitely something that we need to educate folks about and is going to be required under this because people are not allowed to contaminate the compost or organic stream. So they won't be able to put those in, and that's going to be a key piece of our outreach. And Marin Sanitary can speak to that more if you'd like. Also, the tax benefits, a really good point, you know, we discovered that in our, in our listening sessions with extra food and with the San Marin Food Bank, and it's something that we definitely will be promoting as we promote the edible food. Then, in terms of Bill Carney's suggestions and Sustainable San Rafael's suggestions, so what staff decided to do, what we're recommending, is that we really just look at what is essential for the ordinance to provide the clarity and ensure that we, our enforcement staff and other staff, outreach and education staff can clearly communicate what's required and what's prohibited. And our intention would be to see if you could pass to print tonight at the first reading so that we can come back in March to be able to have the final reading so we can adopt the ordinance in two meetings. We did take into account the first comment the Sustainable San Rafael sent us, which was really good, and pointed out some omissions that we had, and which I showed in that slide, and I can bring that back up again for you. I mean, in terms of the prohibited materials one, it's 9.19050. We have those prohibitions in 9.19070, and so we feel like it's adequately covered. This would be a redundancy, which is fine. Again, what we were hoping to do is be able to give you simple amendments that are substantive so that we can make those amendments tonight and have the ordinance pass to print. And in terms of the title and also including the greenhouse gas emissions, this staff view is this is an ordinance, again, about prohibitions and about what is the law to be followed. It's not a place that people are going to go to understand the framing of why it's being done. That's going to be in all of our other outreach and education materials. That's going to be in the way that we present it to all of our rate pairs. So we wouldn't recommend making a lot of amendments tonight to this. The other piece I'll mention is that we see this as SB 1383 Local Ordinance 1.0. In the next two years of implementation, we are going to learn a lot. And my guess is within the next two or three years, we're going to be coming back with version 2.0 that's going to refine and make it work better for folks on the ground because truly the implementation is the most important part. That's where we really reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. We have to have the firm what you can and can't do, but then we've got to go out there and roll it out, and we've got to enforce it and make sure that it happens, right, and provide the extra support to businesses and residents that are challenged with it. To Arlen's point about equity and making sure that we're inclusive in all the work that we do in trying to make sure that we can help people comply with the law to the best extent possible. So that would be our recommendation. That said, a title change or something like that is fairly easy to add, so if you wanted to do something like that, we could do that. And of course, we leave it up to you to direct us how you'd like, and if we do, we can make edits on the spot tonight. And then to Arlen's point about multifamily and new development, that is a challenge, and you know, we do have a built environment. I have not looked at the requirements for new development, but my understanding is, at least it used to be, that when we had a new development, we would invite Marin Sanitary to look at the plans and provide feedback to make sure that there was adequate space. I've not visited that in few to several years, so I might ask Marin Sanitary if that's still happening, and if not, we can make sure that that process takes place again.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Patty. Oh, I see. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, that process is still happening. I will make sure that we're doing that on an ongoing basis as well tomorrow, but it has been taking place for some time, and I'm grateful for that. I want to thank Cory for his explanation on the plastics. The plastics industry has done a fascinating job at trying to convince you that something can be biodegradable or compostable or even renewable, whatever that means in their terms. But in fact, what happens, many of those bags partially break down, and now you've got bits of plastic that no one can control. It violates the basic regulations around composting of organic compost and that label. So for the environment, for many, many, many reasons, from the food chain perspective all the way through, using the containers is the best way to utilize our program and not have it contaminate the eventual product, which is why we bought the Tiger, the deep packager. So that's all great. The labeling issue, yeah, we realized probably should have, when we got to the point where we tipped over and we're recycling more than we haul to the landfill, we now call ourselves resource haulers because we are making these things with partnerships with CMSA and the City of San Rafael into a reusable product. So those are taken to heart, and with all due respect to the label that needs to be used for this ordinance, but that's what we consider ourselves now, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Patty. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council for any additional, just calling you individually because there are a lot of faces on the screen, happily, but I'll call on you individually for any additional questions or comments, and I will start with the Vice Mayor.
No, no additional questions. I really appreciate, I've learned a lot through this process, and I think, as Cory mentioned, we're going to continue learning as we go along. I think that, I appreciate the change, the amendment that's been proposed. I take staff's recommendation that we don't start changing a lot of the language right now. It's really going to be in the, in how we, because the language that we're, we know the language is going to continue to change. You know, just as we go along, and we're not going to come back to the ordinance each time, I think it's going to be going forward in our communication and our education piece. I do appreciate, you know, finding out more about new developments. I think that's really going to be very important in what that process is, as well as what the developers are provided as part of any of our initial documents in terms of recycling requirements. And then also in terms, I know it's just a little piece of the puzzle, but using our neighborhood networks to help in communication and having some neighborhood kits might be helpful, because sometimes all that messaging that comes through, no one, at the end of the day, everyone's like, oh, I didn't know. So, so maybe any other way we could do it, we'll, I'm happy to help. So I appreciate it and be ready to, you know, support this as it goes forward.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Bushy.
I also am prepared to support the recommendation as staff has brought it forward, and I really want to highlight the iterative nature of this. We know this is, this is the first go, and we're going to be improving as we go along, and to also encourage staff and Marin Sanitary to continue working with their colleagues and other agencies and throughout the state so that we're all in this together and learning together and we're proceeding at the same pace. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, state staff. Thank you, Marin Sanitary. This was, I think, the culmination of a lot of work that went in, not just prior to this meeting in the last cycle, but over the last couple of years. So thank you for taking deep and close examination of what it means to be compliant. It seems like that's certainly one dimension that we did a lot of examination around. I think I am very interested, and I think others have commented on this, and the motions ahead on our implementation, which I think a lot of it is monitoring, a lot of it is engagement, especially on how we bring more of our multifamily housed community members into the fold. I'm very interested in making sure that, from the standpoint of equity, that we are able to empower everybody to be compliant. And I think we also have the opportunity, with all of the data that we're going to collect, to help create, I would say, more awareness around the waste streams further upstream, so to speak, how we consume, and what we can do to make sure that we're not just looking downstream at compliance, but also upstream in terms of choice. So I appreciate that opportunity as well. So thanks again for presenting, and I'll be supporting the ordinance as written. I know that there are opportunities to create more awareness, and I appreciate Sustainable San Rafael's comments on that, but concur with the approach as it is. We'll call it 1.0, and as we learn more, we'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Micah, who, as I mentioned earlier, chairs our Climate Change Action Committee, so I wanted to end with you.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm so excited that this is coming, and this is coming at the state level because it had to be that way, so I'm really proud of the city of San Rafael and the work that we already do, like Cory and, you know, Eleanor, and all the support, you know, from Rose and the Marin Sanitary Services. I'm excited. I know it's going to be challenging, but I really look forward to continuing the progress. And I really appreciate the comments from Sustainable San Rafael, especially from Anika Osborne, she was talking about the education component in the schools. The kids are so smart, and they are like the best way to sometimes educate the adults. So I think being creative maybe through the schools in education, and also when I'm thinking about the canal, they, you know, it's such a beautiful community and so proud of the neighborhood. I know they care deeply about the services, about keeping the area clean. So I think it would be great to have like a grassroots system to develop their own educational, you know, components, I guess, and how, what is the best way to reach out to people, but that is coming from them. So I know that Cory is going to be doing a really good job of reaching, and I know Ruben and everybody else as well. So very excited, and I'm definitely supporting this. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I'll just close by reiterating what we heard at the top, which was this is an unfunded state mandate, which, again, recognizing that, we also know we need to be doing this to do our part for addressing climate change and that this is an area. So as much as I don't like unfunded mandates, it puts a lot of pressure on the cities, we of all the cities and counties in California are fortunate to have the team we have at San Rafael, and of course, Marin Sanitary Service. We'd be in a lot of trouble. I think that I was on a call recently with mayors throughout California who were talking about this, and boy, they, they were way behind. Let's just leave it at that. So, so we will get there, and I agree that this will be an iterative process. But ordinance, and I, and I do appreciate, I agree, language is really important, and that will have the language in the outreach and in the communication with our community. On the head of an ordinance and an ordinance itself, I want clarity, so whether it's now or four years from now or 10 years from now, the ordinance is very, very clear and tight. So with that, I just wanted to confirm with Cory that the action is actually to pass to print the ordinance as described, which whoever will read it out, but with the edits that you presented, correct?
Correct. Would you like me to share the screen with us so you can read them once more?
I think we can ask the city clerk or the assistant city attorney, can we just say as presented, or do you want them read, Madam City Clerk? It's two sentences, I think.
I think it's adequate to say as presented by staff.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion. Please read it out and add the last key part that the city attorney just mentioned.
So let's see if I can do this correctly. So I'll make a motion to pass to print an ordinance amending the San Rafael Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9, 9.19, refuse and recycle materials, collection and disposal, and replace it with new Chapter 9.19, solid waste collection and disposal, and edible food recovery, as recommended by staff.
With the edits as presented in tonight's meeting?
There we go.
Okay.
That.
Yes, perfect. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in seconded. City Clerk will sort out who got that one. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Edens Galani.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thanks again to MSS and for the team in San Rafael, you guys are amazing. So thank you so much. Okay, so that agenda item has been completed. I look down and I see that we don't have anything on our San Rafael successor agency, and happy to wave at any staff who flip on their cameras as we adjourn, see there. I know you guys are all out there, I can see your names listed. But again, thank you for attending tonight virtually. We look forward to being together in a month, and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Take care.
Night.